We are. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the March 12th Planning Board Work Session. I would start off by turning it over to Rick Tinter.
Thank you. I'm going to start by walking to the other end of the table and doing a few slide presentations. I think most of you...
You've got to get the mic. You've got to get the mic.
I think most of you were here when we, when I did this one before. And I was just going to go through this again. And I just wanted to go through, go through this presentation again to just remind us of all of the different terminology and the issues. And I have, I actually have this one to go through, so I'll go through this fairly quickly. And then I have some more slides that we've gathered over the last couple of weeks to follow up on our discussion about roof signs and parapet signs and some of the freestanding sign issues. And I then have a couple more presentations to show you as well, to show you examples of things. So, anyway, just kind of following up the different kinds of signs that we talk about in the ordinance. We have, we don't actually talk about window signs. We talk, that's something that's really not directly addressed. It's treated as a wall sign in most cases.
Is that the adhered?
In the window glass itself, yeah. Yeah, so it could be letters in the glass or something like that. It's not really treated as a separate sign, clearly. We treat it, but we talk about wall signs, signs that are flat against the building. We talk about projecting signs, like the one there that's sticking out right by the sill there. Sandwich board signs are really, are not treated in zoning because they're generally not on private property. They're generally in the public, public way. And flags are somehow, there are banners and flags that are, they're permitted or not, depending on the situation. I'm not sure we really deal with these things like the open signs. I'm not sure we address those, really. Again, here we have, and when I did this, this slide the last time, I talked about the difference between a wall sign and a hanging sign. And a hanging sign is distinct from a projecting sign. In this case, on the Boo Mermaid, you've got the wall sign in the arch against the building, and there's a sign that's hanging down. And then there's a projecting sign that sticks out over the, in front of that wall sign in the arch. What we've done since then is we've renamed things, just to try to simplify things. So we've, we're treating anything that's flat in parallel with the building plane, whoops, as what, as being a wall sign. So both the hanging sign and the wall sign, that and that would both be treated as wall signs. And then this little thing up here that you can, you can't see very well is a projecting sign. And then there's the awning sign with the, with the words on the, on the front part of the awning. And then that's a banner. So, there's a variety of different kinds of signs. And again, here, we talked about, and we've done it, we've done, since I did this slideshow last, we created a category for this. I think we called it a building marker sign, something that's actually a physical part of the exterior building wall etched or embossed on to just to give the, the name of the building or the address. And that was going to be exempt from regulation. And we've dealt with for sale and for lease signs. Again, there are wall signs. Here are sandwich boards, again, they're not, not regulated. A marquee sign, not too many of those left downtown. A roof sign, and we'll, we'll talk about this later, a sign extending above the roof line. And, and it becomes very, a judgment call, you know, when something stops becoming a roof sign and starts becoming a parapet sign or, or some roof, parapet, wall. And then, then there are signs in the windows. Again, another, this building nameplate or building marker sign, projecting signs all along here, window signs and wall signs.
Rick?
Yeah?
While you were at this building, something popped into my head.
Yeah.
David had said that downtown in the Eagle Building, what, what we generically refer to as the Eagle Building, there is something on the roof.
Oh, yeah.
And I have walked by there 15 times and looked, and I don't see it.
What is the Eagle Building?
It's, well, I don't know the proper name, but it's the one that took the place of Eagle Photo.
Oh, okay.
I volunteered to take Don down and show him what he's missing.
Okay, that's, that's just sort of an aside.
Okay, I should go down and look myself, too. Again, building nameplate here that we would exempt from the sign regulations, a freestanding sign, window signs, variety of window signs, both those that are, that are in the window and those that are etched on the window. And we had a discussion about what, how far back inside the window something could be in the sign. Wall signs, all sorts of signs in windows, building identification sign, projecting signs, window signs. Again, the, the building, the building nameplate sign up here. And this one we looked at and has a whole bunch of window signs. It's a very, very complex, and it's the kind of thing, looking at the number of signs there are in a building and how, how, it doesn't look bad to have a lot of signs if they're well, well placed. There's, you know, project, several projecting signs, and the Market Street is really very defined by the projecting signs. And the awning sign in here. And wall, wall signs which would be, again, they're on the, on the surface of the wall. Here we have a number of projecting signs, awning signs and wall signs, and I don't think there are projecting signs there. Here, this is not so easy to see, but we have a little, a little neon sign here in the window, and a window sign, and then channel letters, which are the internally illuminated individual letters. And a variety of things here, wall. And this is an interesting thing. It, it works for this, this site. Is that above the roof? Is it, is it a wall sign? Is it a parapet sign? How do we define that? It's kind of a, you know, a interpretation. You can't write the ordinance that gets everything, I guess. And here we have a freestanding sign and a wall sign and a window sign at the Store 24. And, you know, then we've got the canopy issue. We'll talk a little bit more about canopies later on, canopies, and also the changeable signs, the freestanding signs for gas stations. And then a number of canopies. I'll, I'll talk about those a little bit more later. But the gas stations are a problem all to themselves, and I've tried to address that in this latest draft. And then a monument sign. And then there, here's a wall sign for an upper floor use, and then wall signs for lower floor uses and window signs. Again, another wall sign for an upper floor use. Again, not, that's not really allowed in our current ordinance, but that's, they exist. And then the, the issue about hanging signs for, projecting signs for upper floor use is the current ordinance has a strict limit on the size of those projecting signs. It says that all of the signs for one address have to be on the single bracket. So it's a, a way to try to cut down on the, on the clutter. And then one thing we've talked about is these signs that are, that are really not meant to be seen from, for somebody driving by. They're really meant to be seen by pedestrians, and they're, they're small, you can't read them if you're not right up against them. So, to a certain extent, they can be, they can be exempted. These menu signs that are, that are smaller than a certain area. And these, these signs that are with the credit card information and the name of the store and the hours of operation and so forth, we've, we've provided for an exemption for those. We've tried to, one of the problems with sign regulations is oftentimes they, they're too encompassing, and so the issue is when do you, when do you actually start, start enforcing them? Do you really want to prohibit those types of things? I don't think anybody ever intended it, but the, but the problem is the way the sign is defined, it would really, it could really cover those types of things. And then the whole issue of, you know, is a three foot by six foot thing with a, with a product on it, a sign, certainly attracts more, you know, in this case, this, this attracts more attention than the sign for the business does. So it really is something to, to discuss. We haven't really talked about that. We haven't tried to, to exempt, to, to directly exempt them or include them. Just kind of left that open ended still as they are in the current ordinance. Again, another variety of window projecting and wall signs. They can be done, they can be done well, and they can be done not well. This is a, there's a variety of ways to treat chain businesses, like a CVS. And this one's a wall sign with channel letters on a, on a sign board. It's all internally illuminated. And here's one with the channel letters and then the freestanding sign, and then a changing message sign under the freestanding sign, or as part of the freestanding sign. And the scale, your typical town planner, and the sign is a four, three and a half town planners.
Is that like a smoot?
Right. It's a vertical smoot, right. And then these types of pole signs for different types of businesses. And we talked about this as, you know, projecting sign can be pretty ugly if it's done poorly. This is one that is a series of, of light boxes on a business. And this is a, this is a shopping mall. And it's a shopping mall that where they put awnings, they put an arcade out in front of the stores, and they've got, they've got roof signs here, they've got awning signs, they've got projecting signs. There's a whole variety of things that this shopping mall has. And again, it's, it's not particularly the type of sign that's good or bad. It's sometimes how it's, how it's, how it's done. And then there's the issue of internally illuminated awning signs, which, and then this is the, the halo sign issue with a, this is in the daytime and this is at night. But the halo sign being the solid letters with a light behind them so that there's a glow behind each individual letter. And this is the issue, which is Coldwell Banker, is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
Again, more, another halo sign. And then some very interesting variations on signs. The furniture business, I think, I can't remember. And an eyeglass, and you're not an eyeglass person. And, you know, we have to think carefully about how we measure signs. The, that's the, the, the presentation you've seen already. We want to talk a little bit more. We, we've talked last time about different ways to deal with measuring pole signs versus measuring monument signs, and when does one become another. Here, I've just taken some more examples, just to talk about some of the issues. And Rick, Rick Hoppy's going to be here tonight, is that true?
No, yeah.
Okay. Because he, he and I had had some discussion about this, and we want to talk, talk about this a little bit more, there's some changes in the, in the ordinance based on this. But here are, sorry, here are three or four, four things that are clearly pole signs. There's a very thin, relatively thin support holding up a sign. And so, under the current ordinance, you would just measure the, the area of the thing on top of the pole. The last time I was here, we talked about drawing a polygon that included the, the pole site, sign as well, so we didn't make a distinction between a pole sign and a monument sign or a pylon sign. As you, as the pole gets bigger or as you get more poles, you start blurring the distinction between a pole sign and a monument sign. Here, on the, on the left, you've got a, a pole sign approaching, the width of the pole is approaching a third of the width of the sign. Here, there are still two, two poles, but they're still fairly thin, but you really can't see it here, but they're, they're, these blocky poles start getting bigger and start becoming more like a sign, especially if they start getting illuminated. And you really get to the point of, on something like this, where the sign, the poles really do stand out. And here, they really do stand out, and they, they really are, have the same type of effect as, as the sign itself. So, there's a, again, a gray area where you should start, you need to start thinking about when does a pole become part of the sign? And then here, you've got the pole becoming, you know, almost more than half probably of the sign width. And here, you know, where is the dividing line between this pole and this pole? And then, then here is a, it's all the same width all the way up. So it's kind of a progression as the pole gets bigger. And you're seeing more and more of that. Here's an example of a pole sign in Portsmouth, right down, right down there. It's a, you know, on a big highway, sometimes a big sign is, is, is something that's, somebody wants because they want to attract attention to, to the area. Here, we can say, monument sign here at Service Credit Union. And then just down the road a little bit, another monument sign and a pole sign together at the Kia dealership. And then there, then we, then this, so we've had, we've talked about the, the kind of blurry line between pole signs and pylons and monument signs. Now we're going to talk about the blurry line between wall signs and parapet signs and roof signs. So, all of these signs are clearly wall signs. A wall sign being below, flat against the wall, below the level of the roof. So you've got, this one, this one is, assuming that this is actually a habitable space, it's clear, sorry, it's clearly below the level of that part of the roof. And here also, the roof, the sign is below the level of the roof. There are a couple of signs here that are wall signs. And this funny little thing up here is clearly a wall sign. And again, comfort and, there you're getting to be almost a parapet, you're getting above the edge of the roof. Oh, I'm glad you're here. Then you start moving into the parapet. The parapet being something above the roof sign. So you have, more and more, you have buildings that are maybe new, new buildings, maybe renovations of older buildings where they, there are, there are some...
Thank you.
...extra handouts over here at the end. Where you have, the sign is moving above, you know, trying to create an entrance by putting some type of pediment or something above a main entrance to draw attention to it, so that the, the sign is actually, becomes above the roof line here. And then here, you've got this Heritage Commons sign above the roof. Pep Boys is going up, the, the ceiling is somewhere behind there. This is an example of a, a parapet, really, that's, that's, the sign might be out here, but the roof is here, so you can see that the sign would be above the roof. And, and we define those, those things differently. And then you start getting clearly above the roof where the sign either sits on top, sits above, way above the roof, sits on top of the roof, or is actually applied to the side of the roof, to part of the, part of the roof itself. So, there's that kind of blurry line that we were talking about last time, where you move from par, wall to, to parapet to roof, and what do we really want to achieve? And then here's some more examples of it. You know, is that below the roof or is the roof here, and that's really a parapet? You know, and this is, this is above the, I think this is sitting on the roof. Somewhere behind here, that's the same, I believe that's the same thing as we have here, yeah. So we're, we're, we're seeing these signs, and, you know, the signs on the front of it are probably below the roof level, but anything above that would be, would be considered a roof sign. And this is examples of, and maybe they're not that clear, but examples of, as Rick was talking about before, upgrading, upgrading centers, creating new architectural features on them, and then putting signs on those architectural features, and, you know, where they, is it, is it really important how those features relate to, to the roof height? Then kind of moving on, we, we talked about, the next topic was about the illuminated awnings. We talked about some of those things. And this is, you know, an awning during the daytime, and it isn't really that clear, but this is, at night it's illuminated. In the daytime, it just looks like a, a piece of aluminum or plastic, but at night it's, it's clearly illuminated from behind. And these are, you know, many examples. I think the one I talk about a lot is Blockbuster, daytime and nighttime, but they're all over the place, and it's the kind of thing that, that we've tried in this draft to clearly, to, to really restrict, not, not to allow. But we had a lot of discussion about that, about whether those types of internally illuminated awnings were appropriate. And then finally, canopies. Many photos of canopies, mo, all of these photos, I believe, have a, have a word on them somewhere. There's a Shell and probably a Mobil, probably a Gulf, probably an Exxon, Sunoco. But this one, this one is just a generic awning.
EP.
And so, the question, you know, defining that, and I've, I've taken a stab at how to deal with these in this next, in this latest draft of the ordinance, and I want to focus on that a little bit. And then we talked about auto branding, and, you know, the, all, how the dealerships are all branding. These are all varieties, none from Portsmouth, of, of Toyota, Toyota dealerships. But again, the, you know, Fiat, Ford, Nissan, Suzuki. And again, this, you know, looking at, this is, would be considered perhaps a monument sign, this is a pole, is this a monument or a pole sign? And this is a monument, so, or you could call it a pylon, but trying to define what those are. And I, I, we've taken another stab at how to do that. And then there are all the special things, like neon. Sometimes neon is kind of cool. I don't, you know, how, how do we want to deal with that, if at all? Balloons? And giant rats? That was a case, that was a, a federal court case that just permitted that to be there.
That was just recently, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And, and window signs, you know, varieties, you know, how window signs can, can overwhelm. And I think I'm getting, closing in on, apologize for having these in different, in different pieces, but...
Where does the rat live?
The rat is down in, I think it's, it's New Jersey, it's New Jersey. It was a, it was a union, a union protesting against a non-union, non-union contractor. And it was, it was determined to be a restriction of free speech, not to allow them to have, you know, "You're a dirty rat," or whatever.
Only in the U.S. of A.
I wanted to show you this because we've talked about sign height. And I was driving along Route 110, 110 or 120, 125, a while back, and I was really struck by the signs. And so I went and, I don't know whether you've ever used Google Street View, it's a really neat thing. So I didn't go back out to look at it, I just went to Google Street View and took pictures off there. And then I went to the ordinance, this is actually in Haverhill, I thought it was in Placeta, but it's in Haverhill. And the, the sign ordinance has a 15-foot height limit, so it gives you a good sense of what a 15-foot height limit does. And there's a, a freestanding sign for an Applebee's. And, and, I mean, it's not, not a great sign, but it's a, a small sign. You can see the, the sign levels are fairly, the heights are fairly low.
Oh, the microphone.
Sorry. And they're, they're, they're not, it's the same type of sign. Wish I could see this a little bit more clearly, but again, the, the signs are, are down to, to 15 feet. Your typical sign, I mean, when you, when you actually come into this section of town, you actually notice the sign heights dropping down. And, can't see that too clearly, there's a, there's actually a, a small pole or monument sign here for the Mobil station. Another Dunkin' Donuts, and then the Shell sign below the canopy level, a Mobil sign. So you can see that it's, it's still a very visible sign, even though it is at a 15-foot height limit. And, and I've been looking through actually some, some industry, sign industry publications and seeing that they, they kind of look at a, maybe an eight to 15-foot height range, just getting it above the cars, so you can actually see above the cars in front of you. But it doesn't have to be really that high if, if it's, if it's right along the road. Again, another, another Mobil sign at that 15-foot height limit. If you ever want to explore something, this Google, Google Street View is really cool. That was just a quick thing for that. And then one final thing. I told you about this before, but I, I wanted to show it to you. So, historic downtown Newburyport, nice insurance agency, my insurance agency, actually. The facade and the signs are really sensitive to town character. But apparently that wasn't doing it for them. So, they did this, and this is a truck that is just parked on the street, and it's not regulated by zoning because it's not on a private property. It would have to be regulated by some other ordinance, but so far there is none. And, you know, it's right here, we've got this, the historic Bull Finch Courthouse in the background behind the Bartlett Mall, beautiful park, and you've got this, this thing parked there. And so it really does, and each, is it each side, side of the truck is a separate sign. There's one for the insurance agency, two for the oil company, and one for the sign company. The view from the park. But it gets worse because it's an illuminated sign. It's a translucent sign, and there's a motor inside with lights, so that it just sits on the, on the curb at night with the motor running and the sign illuminated. So, you, you walk down the street and it's the brightest thing in the area. This is, this is the new, this is the wave of the future.
This is a sign on public property.
It's in a parking place. It's parked, truck parked in a parking place.
But it's public property.
It's public property.
Why can't it be controlled as other signs on public property?
Well, you have to write an ordinance to do that. It's just, it's...
So there is no ordinance?
There's no ordinance that says, that defines, when, when is, there's a writing on the side of a truck that identifies the contractor become a sign. You know, every, every contract, you know, most contractors have, have stuff like that on the sides of their trucks.
Sure.
And so when does that become a sign? So you have to really think about that, that kind of ordinance. And, you know, there's another view of it with the, the park behind and so forth. So it's a, it's a, it's a tricky thing to, you know, something that, zoning's not going to solve all, all of our problems, that's for sure. Yeah, it really does. I mean, that's, this is, this is a CVS in a bank and a, a Richdale or Honey Farms or something, so you can see how, how much it lights up things compared to the actual illuminated signs on the, on the mini mall.
Nothing about light pollution?
No, no.
Noise?
No.
Fumes?
It's a motor. Yeah, it is fumes, right? I, what I really like is the fact that this is a, is Germania biofuel, so they're marketing themselves as an environmental fuel company.
Well, I have to hand it to the guy that owns the truck, that's pretty, pretty sharp. Pretty sharp.
It is. And just, I would just want to do one little thing here. If I can get this going. So, that's a, is one of the animated signs. This is in Salisbury, I think.
Of course.
See, there's Salisbury, I'm not sure where the town line is.
That's astonishing. There's one of those in Manchester on 293 and Willow Street. It's just unbelievable.
Distracting.
It is distracting.
We're going to be, hopefully prohibiting those in this ordinance.
What is that called? What's the name of that type of sign?
Well, we're calling it an animated sign. We're defining it as an animated sign. This was after summer. I actually went to a restaurant, so I know.
Yeah, because you want to patronize it.
Yeah. So it really, it does, hard for the camera actually to respond to the light properly. It's also hard for you to hold the camera.
After you.
So it really is, it's amazing.
This was for research, I think.
It was for research.
Research.
Only if you want to...
Charitable time.
Yeah, it is.
So, you know, something we, you know, just want to make sure we keep on top of, and I did find another ordinance on it, also talked about holographic signs, it's the first time I found one, I haven't actually incorporated this in this ordinance yet, but maybe some of them.
So, what is a holographic sign?
Something you use laser, lasers to create like a 3D thing floating in space.
I've seen people release smoke, and they can shoot a laser, where you can't see the laser projecting, but when it hits the smoke particles, it has a display.
So, I think that's probably enough of that.
Boy.
So now let's open up that, for somebody to use, open up the new draft of Article 10, just trying to get some of the highlights here, so we don't have to get the whole thing. So, looking at, there's nothing really particular on the first page, but looking at the second page, and signs not requiring a permit, I'm not sure whether we had exactly this before, we had talked about, I think there were some, some different language, looking at paragraph that ends with point 30, a building marker sign, we talked, we tried to pin this down a little bit more, these are, these are signs that don't require a permit, so this is something that's unpainted letters carved into or embossed on a building wall.
What page is this from?
I'm sorry, it's page 154, it's the second page of the document.
Ah, there it is.
And, so, so we tried to pin that down a little bit more, I think, I think we, we had a little bit more open-ended language before. And then we also combined, in paragraph above that, we combined directional signs or informational signs, these are all the ones that are like handicap parking, or enter here, or that type of thing, so we have, those are, those, if they're, if they're less than four square feet, they don't require a permit. We had the discussion about the, I think we grouped together the, under point 40, miscellaneous business signs, we, we, this is fairly close to what it was before, but again, it's, it's trying to allow for those credit card signs, business hour signs, contact, contact information and so forth, and they're just aimed at pedestrians, so there's, again, no, no characters, should be more than two inches in height, the signs, individual signs aren't more than a square foot, yes?
Can you give the logic for 10 dot 1022 dot 60, illuminated signs more than three feet behind any window or opening through which they might be visible from private or public right away? The reason I question that is that if it's inside a store, it is private property, and it is not an encumbrance on the public way, it's not protruding, it's not, it's inside a building. Why, I guess, why do, why does the city think it should regulate that?
Well, the fact that it's inside the building, I don't think really is any more pertinent than the fact it's on private property, if it were, if it were a freestanding sign 20 feet back from the property line, it would still be on private property, it would just be outside the building as opposed to inside.
Okay, let me withdraw and rephrase.
So if you were just, it's the idea of inside the building...
Inside the building, it's, you know, protected from the public.
Yeah, I think the, I think the idea, you're, it's, it's, this is something that's pretty much like following current, current policy right now, pretty much.
Yeah, this is actually, it's saying that you don't want to regulate.
Not regulate.
But he's saying, but you're saying that if you, if you, if, why do you care if it's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I misread that, it said the following signs are permitted without a...
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Thank you, thank you. Never mind.
More than, more than three feet.
Yeah, so the point is, if it's less than three feet, we are regulating it.
Well, let me...
That's what I thought, yeah.
It's still inside.
Supposed to go there.
I knew who was going there.
Thanks, Tony. But my, I mean, question still stands, the logic is still there.
Well, I think the logic is that a sign that's a foot behind the window has exactly the same effect as a sign that's on the outside of the building, because it's, if it's, if it's a large internally illuminated sign...
But don't you think that just there's some, there's some either literal or figurative barrier, when you, when you cross that threshold into a private sort of room or building or something, that, that you are regulating something that's inside a building?
You know, Don, that sign, that steakhouse sign or whatever it was, the last one, the animated thing, if that were right up against the front, and it was, you know, as big as that screen pointed towards Market Square, by your definition, that would be okay, because it would be on the inside of the window.
I think that'd be a rather egregious example, but, but it is, it's a good point.
Yeah, I guess the question is, the question is, why do we, why do we regulate signs?
Well, I don't want to get quite that fundamental, but...
But it goes back to that fundamental question, though, I think.
There have been instances in the downtown where somebody has put a TV facing out onto the street, right in the window.
A lot of people do. Great Waters Trust, I can give you half a dozen people.
Yeah, if TV, I'm, I'm not, I guess if it were a, if it were a film...
Real estate offices showing their latest listings, you know, that's...
Right. So what is the difference between doing it there and doing it one foot closer to the sidewalk than that?
I don't know, there's, something doesn't feel right when you're, when you're regulating something that's inside a building. I mean, logically, if I had a, well, maybe that's not a good example, but if I wanted to put up a Rick Hopley for mayor sign, you know?
That's offensive.
After he retires from the city, of course, I put that in my window, I mean, living downtown, if I had a store, that would fall under the, fall under the purview.
I think we've had this discussion before.
I still don't understand it, that's...
Right, you know what I'd suggest, is you make your point, you know, to get through the ordinance, let's see if there's a consensus that you either do or don't want to get into it, and one...
In other words, it's a nice way of saying, be quiet.
Well...
I'm not offended, Dave.
No, the idea is that we get through this stuff, and we sort of come to this one every few weeks, and the story I'll remind you of is the menu board for that cinnamon shop that was in where Pars Oriental Rugs is now located, and everyone was having a bird, because you could read the menu from across the street. This is an attempt not to get into the inside of the building, and just picking a figure that says the first three feet, we will be a little concerned, after that, we're not. So we're actually recognizing, but...
That's fair.
But if we want to make an issue, perhaps we should see if the board has a real desire to get into it, or can we keep going so we can get through all the others?
Keep going, this point's well taken.
We, further changes from the last time, down at the bottom of the page, the temporary signs, we became more specific about the real estate signs in terms of square footage, and site development signs, contractor signs, as being exempt of those temporary signs. Now, we have, we come here to the question about roof signs, do we want, do we want to prohibit them, having seen the slides that we, that we saw just a little while ago, some of them were here in Portsmouth, and some of them were not, and we've defined a roof sign as a, as a sign that is located above the level of the eaves on pitched or gambrel roofs, above the roof deck of a building with a flat roof, above the top of a vertical wall of a building with a mansard roof, or on a parapet wall regardless of the height of that wall.
Are you ready for input?
I'm ready, yes.
Personally, I, I don't mind if they're all the way up to the top of a parapet, just that has to be some space between the parapet top, I mean, I don't want it beyond the parapet. I think saying the roof line is kind of arbitrary, because no one, the person in the front of the building doesn't know where the roof line is, why should there be this arbitrary value where to put it? One thing I do notice about roof, or if you want, still want to call it a roof sign, is it becomes tacky when they're not vertical. Something about it laying against the roof plane makes it really seem...
So the Woodbury Gardens example, that was...
Yeah, wherever I've seen those signs tilted back, it seems, for lack of a better word, tacky. It's just a personal opinion.
So if it's, if the wall is vertical, you'd be okay with it, if it was a non-vertical wall, you would not be okay with it?
I don't mind if the letters, the signs are vertical on a, on a sloped roof.
Okay.
I just don't want the sign sloping.
Well, that's a different question then, because you're saying now, you're saying that the, on a, on a, let's, we've got, we've got the roof sign, sign that is actually on a roof, which could be a vertical sign on a sloped roof, is what you're talking about, but that's different than a sign that's flat against the wall on a parapet. So those are kind of two different questions, I think, and I'm not saying that either of them is wrong, I'm just saying those are, those are two different things we should talk about.
I agree, they're two different things.
We don't allow roof signs now, right? Signs above the roof.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And we should continue in that practice. Yeah, but really, I...
Well, the question is, parapet, is a parapet wall, parapet wall is considered, is considered a roof sign.
Is there any distinction to be made if there's livable space behind that sign?
Well, yeah, I think, if, if the sign is, if, if the sign is, if there's livable space behind it, then it's not, not above the roof.
Right.
So, but the parapet sign, remember looking at the Heritage Commons sign, the arch sign, that's prohibited, essentially prohibited, or the, or, you know, the things like Home Depot, the big thing that's up to the triangle.
Oh, I'm sorry. If they're prohibited, why are there so many of them?
Because you really shouldn't have asked that question.
I'm going, I'm next.
Want to take that question back?
Try the question.
If we defined it as a building, and any portion of that building, I think a lot of, typically, when you think of a roof sign, you think it on top of the highest point of the building, although there might be a facade sign that if the flat roof is here and it's on a facade, it's above the level of the roof, but do we want to distinguish that from something that's physically on top of the highest point of a building, like the superior towing sign and the, what was the other one down on Vaughn?
Sennell.
Sennell, which is on the roof, so on the highest point of the roof.
Okay, let me make a further distinction, because I, I think it's, so, it seems to me that there's, that we don't have problems, I haven't heard objections, to having a sign on a flat parapet where you can't tell what's behind that parapet. Does that, would you agree with that, the parapet sign, like, like the Heritage, well, actually Heritage Commons, you can tell what's behind the parapet, so that's a different, that's a different, that's a different thing, so let's, let's start with, let's start with Home Depot or something like that, where you can't tell, you can't physically tell that there's nothing behind the sign.
Centrix Bank was another one you had.
Wasn't that one sitting on the, on the wall, though?
Kind of like a wall, kind of debatable.
Yeah.
Christmas tree, that's a...
Christmas tree, okay, Christmas tree, yeah, so there's something that, from the outside, you're, you're in your car, you're driving through the parking lot, it looks like there could be a, a wall behind it, so that, that would be okay, that type of parapet? So then the next thing is, the other extreme is what you're mentioning, is the sign that's physically on top of the highest point of the roof, and that sounds like it's not a good thing. Now, what about those signs where, and you're, I'm not sure I had, I had a couple of examples, where you've got the slope roof, and you've got a sign right there.
Joe's Pizza at Staples Plaza.
Yeah, yep.
That the sign, the sign is above the eaves of a, right now, it's, is defined as a roof sign because it is above the level of the eaves on a pitched or gambrel roof.
I don't like those. Personally, I think they look bad.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think a lot of that is, is tape.
Tape.
So I guess that's the question, what we want to do, yeah, so...
Do you know of any that look good?
Anthony, to get to your question, I mean, we really didn't think we were making mistakes until, so we, till now.
Actually, the Starbucks, Cindy, I thought the Starbucks in the example you had, like from Connecticut or wherever, I didn't think that looked bad.
Yeah, I mean, maybe scale, I don't know.
I'm not passionate in favor of these things, I just don't, I mean, I, I look at the Joe's Pizza one, and I'm like, doesn't bother me.
Yeah, I don't know that it's worth a lot of time to invest in terms of trying to, you know, narrow down the terms under which we would be...
It is to the extent that those that have to enforce it would like clear direction.
Right.
I think, I think the consensus is we're not really concerned about these types of signs, but clearly the ones that are on the roofs are a different story.
Above the roof line, the highest point.
Above the, the eaves.
Well, it's quite, is it above the eaves or above the highest point?
Above the highest point.
I would say the highest point, because I think the visual impact would be less if it's below the highest point. If it's obviously above, right on, literally the peak, would be great for, for a sign, because then people would see it very clearly, but by the same token, it would look awful.
Potentially.
That just sounds like a different definition than what you were talking about.
Change, yeah, change the definition, so right now, so there really are, there are several.
Can I, I have a suggestion, and I don't mean to make it complicated, but I wonder if we just define the height of the roof, either the top of a parapet, in the case of a slope roof, halfway up the roof.
Well, we could do that in terms of the building, because the building height is defined that way, correct, and it's, it's the, it's the median point or the halfway point of the...
With a minimum on a parapet, though.
Anthony?
Yeah.
Rick, just looking at your definition of parapet, does, does that potentially just open itself up to potential abuse, because it says an extension of a vertical building wall above the line of a structural roof?
Mm-hmm.
Now, and I, I say this in light of the fact that we're talking about maybe some level of acceptance of parapet signs, and changing your definition of roof, but if, if we did that, and then with the definition of parapet, I mean, couldn't you see just people literally extending a portion of the wall, almost like a billboard?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what they do.
They run into building height above two feet, though, right? Don't they start running into building height problems above two feet?
What we do right now is we say that if a parapet is over a certain size, it's not deemed a parapet, so they run off all of it that way.
Okay.
But that's pretty darn tricky, and I don't think when we originally wrote it, we really realized how it would interfere with signs.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can, yeah, I can, I can try to work with that, I just want to get a sense of what, what the consensus is for what we're trying to do, I can, we can, I can get the, the details worked out later. So it seems like we're kind of in between and betwixt with the, with things that are above the eaves but below the peak of the roof.
Right.
Okay.
ML?
This, I, I hate to go back, but your truck in the park has me thinking about temporary signs, because I think we've always assumed that temporary signs are not illuminated and likely to be removed when the temporary period is over. I, I'm concerned not only about the truck in Newburyport, but a truck on a car lot, for example, that has the same thing going on, and that is not a, so I'm thinking that anything that's internally illuminated may be a sign? I, I don't know, I'm just, and I, and maybe zoning isn't the way to go at it, but that's my concern, and I think the concern of the citizenry is light pollution and some manifestation.
Look at that. Are we anywhere with the, this roof thing, or should we just, I'll take another stab at it?
Yeah.
Well, it seems like, I, I don't know what you could possibly do, I think it's, I mean, it almost seems like we should have a, a vote here or something, don't you think?
The more direction we get at this point, the more time you're going to save in the long run.
I think, I think the idea of, of the, I think it was yours, of the, of the, using the building height definition as the, as the top of the, as the building can't be above it, so it's, for, so for a peak, a pitched roof, it'd be the halfway point between the peak and the eaves, right?
Is there consensus on that?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have direction.
Hallelujah.
It'd be a little more complicated, but...
To address Tony's concern about the angle of the parapet signs, do you need to include some language in the parapet sign definition regarding perpendicular with the ground?
Yeah, it says, it says a vertical building wall, so the parapet says the extension of a vertical building wall, so maybe that, and it's attached, it has to be attached flat, attached to it, so it's, I think that would cover...
That covers it, gotcha.
That does?
I think.
On a slope roof, then putting the sign sloped?
If it's a vertical building wall, it would have to be like that, wouldn't it?
Talking about two different things, I sound like...
Yeah, what if it's a gable roof?
No, we're talking about a parapet sign. Parapet sign is, is defined as against the, against the parapet, which is different than roof sign.
But does the roof sign going to have a definition about it happening to be...
Oh, I see, the roof sign, yeah, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying, so roof sign would have to be...
And you can have parapets that are at an angle, they're, it's put right up flat against the parapet. I think Staples Plaza is like that one, and, yeah.
Staples Plaza wouldn't be counted as a, as, under this definition, it wouldn't be counted as a parapet then, because it's not a vertical wall.
That's right.
Right, and we have those in plazas.
So do we want to have a different, I mean, I think, but I think a parapet is defined, isn't a parapet really an exten, in the building code, isn't an extension of a vertical wall?
I wouldn't call those parapets.
Boy, I don't know if they use the term vertical, that's a good question, I don't know.
Well, isn't the basic question as a board, do we have concerns with signs being at an angle versus...
We can work it out, if, because that is actually Staples, I wouldn't even consider a parapet wall, it's a faux facade above the...
Totally decorative element.
Okay.
Just a typo, I think.
Yep.
10 dot 1023D, does banners, penance, or flags, except as temporary signs, allowed under section 10 point 1076, there is no 10 point 1076. Is that a five instead?
Let's see, 107...
That's the trick, Don.
I would say so, yes, I would say it's 1076.
Because I was looking for 10 176, or 1076, I couldn't find it, so...
You can come into the office and take care of the rest of this.
Nice item E.
Oh, yes, we talked about this, the question about, instead of doing cubic feet, we talked about doing days per month.
Yeah.
And we have, now, under, under item G, I don't know what that's going to take care of...
That's the truck guy.
The truck, and this is, yeah, this is on... The truck, and this is, yeah, this is on, it only, it takes, it only takes effect if it's on somebody's private property, so, but it, it is meant to be a, I don't know whether we can actually, I don't know whether this will pass muster when we, when we run it by Bob.
Well, here's the thing, one eight hundred got junk, you know, they park everywhere and, and, I mean, there's literally.
Well, that's, but then it's the public way, and that's not going to, that's not going to get them.
They have chased them off of private property.
I, I understand, but if they're parked on the street, can't go.
Registered mode vehicle.
It's, so what trumps what here? The, it's a registered vehicle, therefore it's, it trumps being a sign?
Just picture that it's more than three feet inside a window.
The zoning just doesn't get to that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Finish that one first.
I was just going to say the zoning doesn't get to the, doesn't get on the private property.
Um, back to B, animated signs, does that take care of the LED changeable signs that not necessarily do with the one at the sports grill or whatever that place was?
Where the text fades in and out.
Yeah, it comes in and out, or changes from text to the, maybe the picture of the house that changes to something else. But it's not a motion picture sign, it's a change.
We are saying that, under changeable sign, we're saying a sign, a sign in which the message changes more than once per day shall be regulated as an animated sign.
Okay.
Changes more than once a day, no, that, you could choose a different number, you could say once per hour if you wanted to do that.
An animated sign has a change of light.
Yeah, so I think that would cover it.
All right.
Okay. I just want to skip ahead to find another place where we made changes.
Yeah, because the intent of this is not to revisit everything.
Yeah, we don't want to get, we don't want to.
See the highlights of what you incorporated based on past meetings.
Um, I did make, I did find, after I printed this, after this was printed out, that I missed a couple of things on page one fifty seven. In the, in the first table, the table of permitted sign types, we had actually talked about in sign district one, changing, in, in, sign district one, changing N to P for wall sign, projecting sign, and freestanding sign.
Yes.
And one thing that I will also do, just, just to be consistent, and is not in this draft, but it will be, is, is I will follow this list of signs that we have here in this table of permitted sign types, and make sure I have the same signs in the same order for sign area and, um, sign height and whatever, whatever else we have, sign illumination, just to make sure we, we're catching it all. Now, getting, talking about sign height, well, first of all, on page one fifty eight, we have an illustration about the setback of a sign from a lot line. Be clear, clear about the edge of the, you know, we're not measuring it to the, where it is on the ground, but the closest part. And, yeah.
I may be screwing things up, but I thought there was a, a whole area, no longer use the word setback?
Sep, now yard, there's a difference between a setback and a yard. A yard is actually the area with, that a building cannot be, but a, a sign can be within a yard, but it is setback from something else. There is, that's why we used yard for the other thing. And then on, on, if we skip ahead to one fifty nine, measurement of sign area. And this is where we start getting to some of the discussion and the difference between poles and pylons and monuments and so forth. So we have in here, as you recall, last time I had talked about a polygon, and somebody pointed out that a circle wasn't a polygon, and so, so now we say an area that can be closed by a circle, oval, triangle, or rectangle, or any two such shapes, that's, that's one of the options, or a polygon with eight sides. And then on the next page, we have some examples of how to measure things. And, um, so first of all, we, we talked about, if you recall, the last time I said we would look at the entire sign, so I had drawn a shape around the pole, and Rick and I had some further discussion about how to treat monument signs and how to treat pole signs or pylon signs. So here is a suggested change. It's a little bit more complicated, but it, 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 and it sets up a more or less arbitrary, um, dividing line, but it's, it's at least a starting point. For the monument sign, uh, the suggestion is, and this is in ten fifty three point two, that if, that the base of a monument sign up to one foot above the ground shall not be included in the computation of sign area. So you have these things where there's a little base and it's got a nice little planting around it, and so we, we, we don't, we don't, um, on the one, on the, the one on the left and the one in the middle, we wouldn't count the base, but on the one on the right, the base, wherever it is, is more than one foot, and it's very clearly part of the overall sign structure, so we would count that. That's one, one piece for the monument. And then for a pole sign, we're suggesting that the vertical supports will not be included if the total width of all of the supports, any such supports, is less than a third of the width of the sign, and the supports are not illuminated in any way. So the Walmart sign on the left, um, the total width of the supports is less than a third of the width of the sign, so we, you wouldn't include them in the sign area. Then CVS is kind of on the, on the, it's, it's greater than, but it's pretty close to, well, actually, it's closer to two thirds. And so you've got a two, a two, a two pole sign for the CVS and a one pole sign for the Mexican Grill, and both of those are more than a third of the, of the sign width, so they would be included in the sign area. And there's actually one more on the next page, um, sitting off by itself, it's about one third of the sign, the sign area, sign width. So that's just, that's being thrown out as a suggestion. I know some people liked the idea that I brought up last time, some people had more problems with it, so I just wanted to see how you feel about this one.
Tony?
Um, looking at the height of a, I guess the setback of a freestanding sign, district three.
Page one fifty nine.
One fifty seven. I'm trying to, is that along, am I Islington Street as well?
Yeah, is that sign district five, is that?
District three.
District three, is that CB? Is that CB, the state central business?
Yeah.
It is, except that we're going to be proposing pulling back the central business district along the Islington Street as part of this.
So that'll, right now we have five feet, so that's going to be setback further?
Well, it will actually be, no, it'll actually be sign district two, sign district two, so it'll be, we're proposing the same for the, um.
So that, again, we're at the five feet, though, and I, and I guess the maximum height, all right, that's, so that'll be four feet tall, then?
Yeah.
All right. I was just worried about these signs blocking views of pedestrians and things like that.
Yeah. Well, it'd be five, if it's five feet back, it wouldn't be blocking too many views, probably, except, you mean at a corner, you mean?
Turning into, um.
Oh, turning into a parking lot.
Turning into parking lots and things like that, so, especially at twelve feet, where I thought it was going to be that, that's a big sign to block a view.
So do you think that, do you think that that's a, a, do you think there's an issue there?
If we move it to district two? No.
Donalds?
A question on one sixty, page one sixty, you show the last two, CBS and the somebody's Mexican Grill. Total width of supports is greater than one third the width of the sign, so it is included in the sign area, as is the next one. Implied in that is that if it's included in the sign area, I'm going to use it as a sign. So they could be putting telephone numbers or, um, today's special vertically, so.
The maximum amount of area you can have, so it means you're going to have to get small.
But if it is included in the sign area, then it is a usable part of the sign, at least that's the way I would do that.
Right all over.
Okay? All right, just.
But the sign, the overall sign itself is become, going to become smaller, because you're going to have to include that, if you're approaching maximum.
Yeah.
And now you've got to include those supports, well, now you probably aren't going to be as big as you thought you could be, because now you've got.
All the more reason to use the supports for, for advertising or numbers or, that's what I'm getting at, so.
Service credit.
Okay.
So you, you'll get more, yeah, signs would tend to be more like the signs at the top of the page than at the bottom of the page, probably.
Yeah.
They would be more.
Because the signs at the top of the page, you're counting, you're counting the whole area of those signs anyway.
They're going to use.
If you can, if you only have, for example, um, if you only have twenty square feet in a.
So that, but, but that still fits in with your general view of what these signs are all about, and if someone were to use the supports that are included in the sign area as literally sign area, that would, you would have no objection to that.
Yeah, and, and remember what I said about the, uh, you know, looking at what the sign industry says, and they, they don't really want to use that, I mean, that's, that sign area down there is not really that helpful for them on a, on a street that is not a pedestrian street, because it's below, it's hidden by the cars that are going by, in many cases.
Okay.
So it's, they'd like it to be a little bit higher.
Yes, Cindy.
Rick, you brought up that, the one twenty five corridor down through Plac, or Hazel. Now, our comparable corridor, I guess, would be Route One, which is sign district four or five or six or some combo.
Four?
Do you think, right now, are we twenty foot height limit in that area? Do we want to get shorter? I mean, I, I'm interested in what the board thinks about that. Would we want to go down to fifteen feet?
I'm all for shorter. Yeah.
I, I really liked what Rick showed in those pictures of the fifteen foot.
Is twenty the current?
Twenty's the maximum height, right, Rick?
Believe in.
Yeah. The thing is, once you start, you got to realize you're going to balance your landscaping, too. So as you bring your signs down, you bring your landscaping down. So if you want landscaping to go around the base of a sign, if you bring your sign down, you're going to get less for landscaping, that, that's going to be a lot smaller at a mature height, so it's trade off.
But now, if what you said is true, the industry standard, that they don't care about that lower level.
Right. Well, much, if you, if you're doing a pole sign, I mean, if you did a, if you did a fifteen foot pole sign, you still had, you know, you, you could bring it, you could either do it as one of those pylons that was, you know, tall and, taller and thinner, or you could do it as a pole in order to get a bigger sign area at the top. But you still, if you did a bigger sign area at the top, you would have more room, you'd still have room under it for landscaping.
What I'm just cautioning is, one relates to the other, and so if you have a sign, you have to realize that you're going to have landscaping on the site, too, and how is that going to be treated around the sign? And when it matures, um, are they going to cut it away because it's now blocking a sign? So it's, it's a balance, and you've got to figure out what that is.
Fifteen. Twenty feet's huge.
How about along the Spal McTurnpike, where is it there? Is it twenty?
Probably. I think it's general business, I think it should be the same.
That's kind of twenty. Man, it feels, feels a little different because it's so wide.
Yeah.
GB is twenty feet. The tallest you have now is, um, twenty-five, and that's, you know, if you've got a, say a Home Depot store or something, that, that's large. But, um, prior to this, the sign height was thirty? It was thirty, so last time around, it came down to ten feet.
Some of the tall signs you're looking at are.
Are from that era. And I think before that, it was forty feet.
Yeah. How about, how about, how about the Walmart sign, is that, is that, was that a variance or is that?
I think it was. I think it got denied X number of times until they finally got a size that, you remember the logo?
Walmart got, yeah, it went to the Board of Adjustment, it was denied several times. The ninety-nine is a real classic one, that started up here, and you see the ninety-nine sign, it's about that big right now.
Yeah.
ML?
I, I just, for, for making things move, I'm all for fifteen feet everywhere in terms of signage and height, even in GB.
So how people, does, does anybody have a counter? So, so for the, so industrial and everything?
But should an applicant be able to go to the Board of Adjustment for relief if they had a special argument?
Yeah, always can.
Right.
It's one of the difficulties.
But I, but I'm comfortable with that, so you start out lower and you just have to go through a process, which means that you've got aesthetic considerations that can come into play.
I'm all in favor, except for zone six, for sign district six. To me, when you enter that type of area of the city, you're, you're really kind of, you're looking for businesses, you're looking for.
Pretty much industrial.
Yeah, well, even PEs, I mean, I know PES is regulated different, but, um, I think when you enter an, you know, especially one of these facilities over off of heritage, like the, uh, the mass, um, what are they called? Pre, you know, those buildings, I can't think of the name of those buildings, where they all look the same.
The steel buildings, Butler Buildings?
Yeah, the, we have a term for them in the engineering world, but yeah, the Butler Buildings, the, uh.
Can't say it on TV.
No, you guys probably wouldn't understand. It's a pre-engineered metal building. I don't know if that means anything to you, but, um, you wouldn't know what I'm talking about. But I think those type, you really need to have a, um, prominent sign. I mean, the twenty feet there is not, that's not an aesthetically pleasing area, so I think the corridors we're concerned about.
I would just, I would just say that I, I think that it will never be aesthetically pleasing unless we begin to encourage lower heights and more aesthetics.
And you want to light bright areas off very rarely.
Well, I'll leave it at fifteen.
Sort of like landscaping. I didn't mean to insult anybody's intelligence.
We're feeling terrible.
You didn't sound arrogant at all, Tony.
I think there's therapy for that, Tony.
ML, would that mean district three would go to fifteen?
No, no.
No.
That's okay, Rick.
It's only three feet.
Yeah, you're right.
Went through that in my head.
That depends, I, I really like small signs.
You could always split the difference and go to eighteen.
Next.
That would match light poles.
On page one sixty-one, if we could, um, let's see how this flies, uh, item point four zero, the sign area of a canopy sign, and I have defined, this is a new definition, and a definite, the canopy, the canopy is being designed, defined as a freestanding structure constructed of rigid materials providing protective cover over an outside service area. So that seems pretty limited, and a canopy sign is a sign attached to, affixed to, or otherwise mounted on a canopy. So the sign area of a canopy sign shall include all text and symbols, whether or not illuminated, and all illuminated areas, but shall not include non, non-illuminated areas that are distinguished from the background only by color stripes.
So that means the bank and historic district could.
The bank is not a canopy.
These are like gas, gas stations?
These are gas, yeah.
Oh.
So. So this would be, if, if the canopy was all illuminated, then you'd count the whole thing as sign area. But if it's just got letter, the letters could be illuminated, but if the stripe, the color stripes aren't illuminated, then you wouldn't count them as part of the sign area.
Are most gas canopies illuminated?
Not right now, but they could be.
I like that approach, it's a good middle ground.
ML?
So just for clarity, that BP canopy, which was just the green stripe, would not?
Would not be counted as a sign.
And that was the purpose of including that photo, was to try to get some dialogue about that, because the, actually, that canopy doesn't have any words or symbols on it, it's just the green stripe, even on the route, on the bypass. We all know it's BP.
Right.
Well, I did, but me.
Tony and I did. When you count it as a sign, though, do you count the whole facade that has the lettering? In other words, usually it's mobile, and then there's the whole rest.
That was the point of saying that it includes all the text and symbols, but it shall not include non-illuminated areas that are distinguished from the background only by color stripes. So just include the mobile.
With a canopy, maybe if we just said, canopy signs can be so big, and then just cut it off at that, rather than going through this convoluted stripes and illuminated and everything that, just say, like we say, projecting signs can only be four square feet. You can only have X amount of square feet of canopy sign, and they can decide where they want to put it?
We have to say whether stripes signs or not.
That's the question, are you saying, so you're saying make it a really big sign?
No, I'm not saying make it big at all. I'm just saying limited to, say, ten square feet for canopy signs. And then just, and then say, you know, that's limited to text only? Because if you're saying you're exempting stripes and things, and whether they're illuminated or not, if you just say you can have ten square feet of text, would that make it easier, Rick?
Well, doesn't this have...
I think he's doing that. I think he's doing that, yes. And what you're saying is in four, five, and six, you can have ten feet.
And the only thing I would say is that I want to make sure illuminated, from, if we go with Lucy's definition, wouldn't fall away, because I think that's a key component.
I think, I think it's covered the way it is made.
It is covered, I think, yeah. And actually...
The fact will be the same.
We just entertained one last week, or the week before, where we gave, we, it wasn't clear on the application, and upon inquiry, we determined that the entire canopy was going to be illuminated. And then I said, well, we'll have to include then the whole length of the canopy as your sign, and he quickly said, well, it won't be illuminated.
There you go. It works already.
Where's the ten square feet that are here?
Should be on the...
Table on page one fifty-nine.
Page one fifty-nine, yeah.
It's good.
I think it works.
Okay, so also on this same page, going down to point seven zero, and this is trying to figure out how to do, I found this from another, and I actually found an illustration of it, too, so I could probably put the illustration in. But basically, it's how, somebody asked the question, how do you deal with a three-dimensional sign? And what they did here is they, somebody, you put this imaginary box around the image, and you, and the imaginary box is the smallest box that can completely enclose the sign, and you measure the four sides of that and take seventy-five percent of it. And that's the way to do it, so you don't have to actually measure curves and that kind of stuff.
That's a great idea.
Any zoning ordinance that uses the word polyhedron is awesome.
The question I have is this, is this, I looked at it, and I was wondering whether it was really a four-sided polyhedron, because isn't a six-sided polyhedron, if you've got, because they meant to have...
It is, actually.
Six-sided polyhedron. The four vertical sides of a six-sided polyhedron.
I think it'll work.
We'll just make an illustration.
Well, wait till somebody says, but wait, seventy-five percent is actually...
The only polyhedron you can get is a pyramid. So, and then the last thing is brand new, and it's because of some things we were looking at, and we need to think about this. Decorative lighting on a building or structure, including neon and other accent lighting, and any illuminated building panel, shall be considered a wall sign for the purposes of this section, and shall be counted as part of the aggregate sign area allowed. Now, there are two things here. One is, let's take, forget about the illuminated building panel for a second, but there is, I know you can't forget about it, but try to forget about it. And the other thing is this, the idea, because I think, was this something that came in as a building permit, Rick? The green light washing along the side of the building?
The one we were looking at.
Yes, that's right.
And that was why, that was what this is meant to address.
It was an inquiry, would this be?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And it wasn't really covered by our sign regulation right now.
But it was quite significant.
So somebody, it was a hotel chain or something, that came in with uplit green lights splashing across the sides of the building, and then downlit green lights splashing across other parts of the building, and there were no words or anything, it was just the green light that was doing it. And so the issue was, do we want to count that as a sign? And we sort of, if it were, if it were green, if it weren't light, if it were painted on the side of the building, I think we could call it a sign, because it's a color that draws attention to the building. But the fact that it's light that's shining on the building is a question. So, so I guess that's a question whether you want to, whether you want, and this is actually wording that I found in another ordinance to address that. So I thought that might be one way to address it if we want to do it. And then, obviously, we know what the illuminated building panel might refer to, so that could also be addressed.
Where we have linear lights, can we give like a minimum dimension? And so, because they could probably get a, one of those really bright lights, the...
LEDs, or halogen?
LEDs.
If they have, somehow the technology, ever seen the building outline lighting, where somebody does that?
Go to Mr. Bubble.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if we can get, you know, if someone has linear lights like that, you know, don't let them say, all right, I have a millimeter times seventy feet, and they end up, you know, with one square foot that you could get, they could outline the entire building.
Well, you know, it's interesting you bring that up. I was going through some other ordinances, and I found an ordinance that restricted outline lighting. And I said, I'm not really sure that that's an issue, but maybe, maybe it's something we should address, I don't know.
Especially Christmas time.
Yeah.
Well, actually, they actually mentioned it, the ordinance actually addressed it as something that was seasonal, whatever.
And actually, Rick, I was at a restaurant, or going by a restaurant in another community nearby. Somebody's... And the building's roof structure really was outlined with individual incandescent bulbs.
Yeah, that's what they do.
And this was just last week, so it wasn't Christmas. Yeah, it was, it's a chain.
So, well, let me, let's, let me ask first about this one, and then think about the other one.
On the flip side, I'm a little concerned about decorative lighting perhaps being too broad. I mean, when is it decorative lighting that's, you know, not really a sign, not intended to communicate, possibly to light a couple of trees, or I don't know? And when is it something that's communicative in nature, and therefore would fall under our sign ordinance? And I don't have an easy answer to that, but I'm concerned that I would definitely want to stop the green monster kind of thing. But I don't know that all decorative lighting falls into that category.
I sort of wonder if you might be in enforcement action when something comes up, and that a great deal of this may not really come about.
Yeah.
And what you may be looking for is to have a tool when you need it.
Donald?
Yeah, I agree with ML, because I'm just trying to envision a big building with lights on the ground shining up, literally accenting the front of the building, maybe the first two or three floors, or something like that. That, to me, is not even close to being a sign. It is, it's decorative, it looks nice. It's part of the building, it's the way the building looks at night. And then maybe at eleven o'clock, they turn them off, and, you know, everybody goes to bed and all that. But I just, I can't, I can't make that connection between that kind of stuff and a sign, that's the problem I have.
Anthony, did you have a comment?
I just had a, yeah, a question, Rick, where it says decorative lighting on a building or structure, including neon and other accent lighting, and any illuminated building panel? Are those supposed to be joined?
Should be or?
I would think so.
Yeah.
I think one of the issues is the degree, I'm just going to hit the wrong button, but the degree of offensiveness, the amount of light that's spilling over the property line, the intensity of the light, stuff like that.
I think what it really, I think what it really is, is the degree of almost specificity. Like what Donna is talking about is kind of a general wash, the light washing ability, as opposed to what we were looking at, which is something that created these green ovals on the side of the building, that just, that were very clear. Yeah, it created a design at night on the side of the building.
Don't we have a definition somewhere that says, for the purpose of calling attention to the... Shouldn't we say, you know, it's light that's just happy light?
Yeah.
You know, but if it's light that's saying, look at me!
Happy light, I like that.
And how does it translate to dark sky friendly? If you have uplighting, shooting at the sky, you're telling them all their parking lot lights have to go down, and not go past the property line, but then we're discussing decorative lighting that may shine up into the sky.
But they could still, they could, they just chose to do that because that's their brand, they could actually have done it from the top and shone it down, shined it down, I guess. It was, you know, I know what you're saying, we could get them on the dark, dark sky, but if they didn't, they could turn it around and shoot it down.
Maybe a distinction would be decorative lighting on a building or structure that is a sign, or that could be a sign, or something, tying that definition...
That otherwise means the definition of a sign, or something like that, yeah.
Signed by any other name.
By the way, in the same thing, it says other accent lighting. Do we need to broaden that to say something like other accent lighting types? Or is it really working as just that way? I really don't know.
I'll look at the word. Now, so let's go on to the other question about outline lighting, do we, do we want to deal with that here?
Should we prohibit it?
Yes. That's my question.
Is it a train that's going to come to Portsmouth?
Was it a train?
He said it was a chain, a chain restaurant.
It's already in Portsmouth, but for whatever reason, they're not doing this in Portsmouth, but Dover, they are.
But it's a train.
Yes, it is.
Does it communicate the brand?
No, it's just, it just draws your attention to the building at night. And that was my thought, you know, the drawing attention, you can do a lot of different things to draw the attention, and by definition, uh-oh.
I know people still have Christmas lights up, and they have them every night, so, I mean, they're still outlined.
I think, yeah, I think that you get the flexibility you need if you say it somehow falls within the category of sign. And then, you know, Christmas lights might not be, or I don't know, expensive, and they're drawing your attention.
Don't prohibit it, but just say it counts in the total sign square footage, and then they won't do it, because they don't have to...
That gets back in hand.
I'm just wondering if we should just add a width to it? Because the technology, the technology is such that they could have such the thin...
Tube.
Tube that...
And where the light shows is included in the calculation.
Actually, I saw, I actually saw...
And on a moonlight light.
And we allow five square feet?
I did see a definition that said something like a light, you know, that spilled over, you would, you would include four inches or six inches from the light as part of the sign area, you could do something like that, yeah.
That would be impossible.
No lunar light.
What is that absolute?
We all have new appreciation for how Rick Hopley has to force this thing, though.
This brings up a point, though, the spilling of light. Is the new zoning ordinance very clear on the sign, the light spillage on signs as well? So, like, you know, someone's not putting in a sign that's permitted spilling light over, to a residential neighborhood, but everything they're doing is permitted?
No.
We have something in there.
It is, I don't think it is covered here.
I'm sure we don't cover brightness of lights, or anything like that, so...
You have something for the external light fixtures, not exceed fifty-foot candles. But you don't have anything for inter, oh, you do, internally illuminated signs shall be limited to a maximum of one thousand nits, whatever a nit is.
Yes, yeah, I haven't figured out how to do that yet. We'll look at that, I'll look at that to make sure this is appropriate.
That's a good point, though, Tony, yeah.
Okay, good. Then if we can... We talked on signs on more than one facade of a building, I took out the graphic that we had in here before, it was just a little bit confusing, rather than, this is on page one sixty-three, I'm sorry. That, I think the graphic was confusing, I'll try to come up with a better graphic. I think this is still the same, pretty much the same regulation, one of the things that we had in here was a non-illuminated sign that's not visible from public right-of-way, should not be counted the maximum aggregate sign area, that was for some of the signs on the backs of these auto-oriented uses. Let's see, and I think that is most of the changes that we made in this.
Are these roof signs that are below half the roof height on a gable roof considered roof signs or wall signs?
Well, that's a good question.
Right.
Yeah, we're going to have to come up with sign areas, or sign areas for those.
Because that'll be, if it is, it sounds like we'll need to add...
We're going to have to add...
Topping centers, or...
Yeah, we're going to have to add to the tables, the maximum areas of, of roof signs and parapet signs. Yeah, we'll have to add to the tables parapet signs and roof signs.
I'm assuming, though, you would still start with sort of like a total sign area for each property, and then they can spend, if you think of it as money, they can spend it in a variety of ways.
So they can, they can spend it on freestanding, or that, that's kind of neat. Pick your poison.
Yeah. I think the numbers are going to be significantly higher than under the present ordinance, because it's being done so differently.
You think what?
Those sign areas will probably be significantly higher because of the way we're changing the measurements.
Oh, you mean, you think they'll be able to get more square feet?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Be curious to see how it works out.
Because if we're still, if we're still limited by the total sign area per, per...
Because you haven't changed that.
Haven't, I haven't changed this since the last time, no.
Yeah, because I'm thinking, for example, an awning could take away an awful lot of signage, and perhaps that's good, perhaps it's not.
That will make it go down, I thought you just said they would be allowed to have more square footage.
I think the total for the lot will probably go up over the existing ordinance, because so much more could be considered a sign.
If you wanted to keep roughly the same amount of, if you like the way it is now, and you want to keep it the same, we restricted it so much that...
We'll look at this.
Restate that.
The overall areas in this are similar to what they are now.
Yeah.
As in the maximum square footage I can have on my property?
Right. We're including in the new more items that could be qualified as a sign, therefore, you're...
There's less to play with.
Exactly.
Okay, good, that's what I thought, I thought you were saying the opposite.
No, I'm saying that you're going to need to allow more.
Yeah, you're going to need to adjust or compensate for that, perhaps, if you're...
I get it.
What are we including now that we didn't include before as signs?
Parapet walls. Not parapet walls, the big wall, illuminated wall.
The base of some signs that are greater than a third, that Mexican restaurant thing.
Right, but we've lowered the sign height, so you don't need to increase the sign area, because the sign height, if you've lowered the sign height, they, they're not going to be, you're lowering the sign height and then including more in the sign area, so it's probably going to balance out, I think.
You should probably pick some sample properties to see.
Decorative lighting.
We might have to do that.
No, I'm just saying...
Donald, did you have a related comment?
Well, the non-conforming signs, can we go to the end of that?
Sure.
It seems to me that we're doing away with the concept of grandfathering here. Because if the fifty percent or more is blown down, destroyed, any reason...
It's one sixty-six.
This is page one sixty-six, section ten dot ten eighty. Pretty extreme example, but let's say McLeod bought the property back at Yocans and decided to rebuild his restaurant. That could not be done with that sign there, according to this, the regulations here. Why are we, why are we doing away with the concept of grandfathering in these non-conforming signs?
What was your example sign again?
Yocans, the whale.
Yocans. Yocans could not rebuild as Yocans with that sign.
Why, why not?
Because, number one, it's unoccupied for a period of one hundred and eighty consecutive days or more.
Okay.
You're assuming that the Yocan sign wouldn't conform, which you're probably right about because of its size, and it's right...
Yeah, it's got lights and blinking, and, you know, it's got everything that we don't want, so it's too big, it's too wide. But my point is, I guess, that somebody that has a sign, I use the example of the last meeting, their sign is there, a car goes out of control, bang, it knocks the sign down. Suddenly, the sign that they've had for thirty years has to be conforming to our current regulations, as opposed to replacing what was there, verbatim. I don't understand...
But ten point eight-two covers that. Says shall, maintenance required by the, shall include replacing or repairing worn or damaged parts of a sign or sign structure. So if it gets mashed by a truck, you can put it back, that's my read.
Yeah.
It's only if, you know, Yocans is the perfect example, that property got vacated.
Then move to the next section.
Yeah.
It says a non-conforming sign shall be removed, made conforming, or replaced, replacee, with a conforming sign, with a conforming sign.
If the use changes from Yocans to whatever it's going to be there.
No, it says fifty percent or more of the non-conforming sign is blown down, destroyed, or for any reason, or by any means, taken down, altered, or removed. Lightning hits it. A city truck cuts a corner too close and takes the sign down. I mean, I just don't understand why we need...
Now that you're saying that, it seems like ten point eighty-two and eighty-three A are in conflict. I think that's what our existing ordinance says, though.
Can I have this for one week?
Sure.
Can I have this ordinance for one week, and then we can fix it?
Lucy?
Let me...
Getting back to what Don was saying on eighty-three B, does that mean in this market, if you've got a business for sale, and somebody's gone bankrupt, they're gone, but they're trying to sell the property, and it's got a valid sign, and it's got a, well, it's got a non-conforming sign, and everything, and somebody finally comes in, a hundred and eighty-two days later, and wanted to open up that business, that sign has to go away?
That's the way I would read it, yeah.
That's the way I read it, too.
Is that a bad thing?
It's part of the business, you know.
Well, the question is, do you want, if the point of this is to have the community gradually move toward this, toward this standard, then you want to have this here. If you don't really care about that, then maybe we don't want to, maybe we want to just say, everybody who's here already can have everything they have, it's only new businesses that come in that have to conform to new sign reg, oh, new, new signs, the only things that have to conform with the sign regulations, that's...
What is the time period for non-conforming use? Right now? Eight or nine months. I think if you just use a consistent figure for that, I think it could tie in.
I think it's a good thing, I mean, I think it's the only way over time you accomplish achieving these goals. I mean, it's unfortunate if someone drives into someone's sign and it needs to be fully replaced, but that's the right time, then, to bring it into compliance. replaced, but that's the right time then to bring it into compliance. I think it's a good thing.
What did you say about...
Non-conforming uses tend to abandon a non-conforming uses eight months.
Eight months.
I'd just suggest using the same requirement, same deadline.
Well, I don't know if it's gonna be the same in the new ordinance.
I don't have a strong, well, look at it, we have the, I'll check.
Maybe just cross-reference, so that if it changes in the ordinance to be longer or shorter, you're just in sync with it.
Yeah.
It was the council itself that actually moved us to the eight months, because we used to have a year. And it was the policy decision that they wanted things to come into conformity, and I think that's sort of a fucking...
For a reason, yeah.
I understand the concept of moving towards conformity, and that's, we do that with lots, we do that with a lot of stuff, but that still doesn't... I guess I just can't, I can't get my hands around the idea of abandoning a grandfathered sort of a concept.
But we're not abandoning, if we've got eight months, we're not abandoning it.
But if somebody acts, if the house burns to the ground, you can build it back on the same...
There are two different points. I think you're right, to distinguish between item A and item B.
Okay.
So we can look at that. Maybe we want to take away item A, I don't know.
Actually, yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think, I think I have less problem with B than I do with A.
And you gotta think, how often, I mean, in our memory, yeah.
Bolarama. Bolaramas...
But how often in the grand scheme of things on it? And how many cool, big old signs do we have other than the whale sign, honestly, in this town? I mean, there's a lot of them I kind of wish would get hit by lightning.
In a way, if Bolarama could stay, it would be better than replacing it with something that's the same size as it is.
The only reason he came up is he wanted a new sign.
Right.
Yeah, he didn't get damaged, that was...
My point is that if a car took that out, he would be forced to do that.
But my point is, how often are we having these big old bad signs get knocked down by lightning, Mack trucks, or small children?
Okay.
ML?
Just to Don's point, I think what Don's saying is you shouldn't be penalized for what's beyond your control.
Right, yeah.
So, it's not all of A that would go out, it's just the part that says...
Blown down, destroyed, yeah.
Or not by the owner or occupant. Or otherwise not under the reasonable control of the occupant, or something like force majeure.
Okay. So I've just highlighted in the last few pages, I've highlighted the new definitions that are in here. Here are just a few of them.
These are gonna get moved to the definition page or they're gonna...
No, these are gonna stay here. We decided that this, there were several areas where the definitions only applied to one section of the ordinance really, so we just keep them all here. So anything else on signs?
ML?
Just very, very quickly, as you go through, the concern I have is illumination going off the property, however that occurs. And want to make sure that we're mindful of that.
And as we go through this too, we're trying to do as comprehensive a job as possible, but we are certainly going to miss things. And so I just want to reiterate, this is, we'll be able to look at this in a year and see a whole bunch of things that we wish we had done differently, and we can change them. It's, we're getting it into a particular shape, and I don't think we can do too much damage in a year, you know, no matter what Tony prices it.
It is a very good point. It's not the end-all, be-all that the zoning ordinance that we may recommend in the end is gonna be here forever. It's always a work in progress.
Yes.
Christmas card.
Santa on the roof.
Define Christmas, Tony.
Okay, so, let's look at this Article 9 section here. I, you know, we went through a, there were a lot of questions the last time we went through this, and I have to say that I haven't answered all those questions yet. So there are some areas in the table that are, that still need some work, but again, this is, that last thing that I said was really lead into this as well. It's not perfect, I want to say it's not perfect. But I like, there are some things I'd like to highlight for you, and I don't, I'm not gonna, I don't think we should really focus on the number of spaces per use, we can look at that more in more detail in the, really the staff level, I think. But if we switch, if we flip over to page 140, shaded area here, we had, we had, there were two provisions before that were, one about parking in a required front yard and one between a building and a street, and they seemed to be able to be combined, but one thing that we did say was that we shouldn't apply this restriction to off-street parking for a single-family dwelling or a two-family dwelling that is outside the historic district. So that was just kind of a broad exemption to that limitation. So, we're keeping the limitation, but saying that required off-street parking spaces can't be in a required front yard or between the principal building and the street, but we have an exception for those particular single-family, two-family uses. So if somebody can have a driveway in front of their house, but hold it in two parking spaces.
In any gesture?
What we said in, my notes from the last meeting, and I may be wrong in this, was that we said we, for a single-family dwelling or a two-family dwelling that is outside the historic district. Do you think it should be only applied to certain districts?
No, I was just, thought it should apply all over town.
Not in the historic district, though. Or you think it should apply in the historic district?
Okay.
That's where parking is the tightest.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture where this would be a case, I guess. Sort of envisioning the different streets.
Somewhere along the middle?
The south end.
Walton Alley.
I just can't.
Look at it in the front yard.
South end is really the wrong place, I can picture.
Are you including, I don't know, a garage, but that would be...
Well, let's, I mean, ask the question, if you think that, if you think, I just took this as what I thought was the decision from last time, so if you think that we should say for all single-family and two-family dwellings, regardless of the historic district, you think that's appropriate? Do you think that's appropriate?
I think we shouldn't really restrict on one and two-family where they're working. I think sometimes it's so tight in older lots, I mean, new ones, it's easier to have a driveway that, you know, you can have a choice where it goes. There's, you know, they're lucky to get off the streets in some places.
Especially if you get towed if you're on the street.
I know we don't have, sorry. I know we don't have too much new development, but, I mean, it seems to me if you're requiring parking to go behind, we're increasing impermeable services, we're requiring bigger lots, which is not, I mean, I think we're trying to do the urban compact design. I think that we should have the parking in front all, parking should be allowed in front of the buildings in all one and two-family dwellings.
This is not saying it can't be in front of the buildings, you're saying it can't be in the required front yard, but you're saying that...
Same thing.
Okay.
That's a good point. I guess my concern is with a specific case that I recall while I was serving on the Historic District Commission, in which an applicant wanted to move an entire house back. And we denied, and they ended up going through the system and getting approval to move the house back, the primary goal of that being to have a parking spot in front, and that's absolutely the last thing I want, is to have a parking spot, like, you know, designed by moving a house back. I mean, you know, the houses being on the street is a major part of the streetscape within the historic district. So it's one thing if a house is already, you know, has a front yard, but most of, most of the houses, I'm thinking in the south end, don't, so I don't want to sort of create a little opening there for someone to somehow think that they can willy-nilly go moving houses around in order to create parking spots. The dimension is still five feet in the GRB, you couldn't put a parking space there in a house.
So aren't we saying though, this isn't gonna apply to any single-family or two-family? So we're not saying you have to park out back of your house, because it doesn't apply?
Yeah, but it would apply in the historic, so we'll take, we want to...
I thought we all agree, I thought that...
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, is I'm not sure. I guess I would agree with that.
I'm really confused now.
Sorry, I mentioned...
There is dissension about whether or not the words "outside the historic district" on point two. I get it.
Right.
I'm a little slow.
Rick?
But I do want to go back to the body of this section, because I think Tony asked, or someone did, does this preclude, does this section preclude parking in front of a building?
Oh, you're right, right, that first sentence would, yes, right.
Okay.
Between the principal building and the street, good, good point. So that's a separate question, right. So maybe we should go to that question first, and then...
That's why I was confused, I didn't really...
This section wants you to put parking in, behind the building.
Behind, or behind, behind a facade, right.
What if you had a building, here's the street, and you had a colonial building and it had its L off the side, and your parking was between here and the street? You're saying this is part of the principal building, so you couldn't put your parking here because it's between the principal building and the street? It's not up beside the building, it's not in front, but it's beside a side addition to the building, so we're saying you can't put your parking there?
What do we allow or require now?
Nothing, we don't, we don't control it at all.
It hasn't been too bad of an issue either.
No, it hasn't. And DPW is the one that issues driveway permits.
Do you want to example all single, two-family homes? Is that, is that what you would...
Oh, it wasn't a two-family home she was talking about, was it?
Well, that was, that would, that could be a single-family home, where you have your street and the house is five feet off, and this addition off the side may be, you know, at its back corner.
Garage.
And typically, it could have been a garage, it was converted, and they park there.
Why don't, why don't we only include the HDC?
Well, part of the, part of the issue we were talking about was saying, we were actually thinking about commercial properties.
Right.
Because we were thinking about wanting to have parking lots behind, so...
Why don't we only include single-family and two-family dwellings in the HDC?
Because we, I think there's a big concern about the single and two-family buildings, the lots in the HDC being too small. I think we could just exclude single and two-family dwellings altogether.
Yeah, maybe.
That may be the easiest, or the best.
The case that I'm thinking of is obviously a long time ago, and there's really only been one, which is the point you were making, you know, a few minutes ago, so...
The other one is, if some, this car is gonna be towed, and they've got some green space in front, and so for an emergency purpose they can put the car there, do we really want to stop them? If that person is trying, well, no, but picture, you know, when we were at site review, when the lady came in and said there was not enough parking around here, then when there's a snow ban, I can't park in front of my house, blah, 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 and I gotta carry my groceries and so and the other. I think you want to be a little leery, and perhaps concentrate on the commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, we care about the commercial, but the front yard, Lucy, in your example, would that L, the thing in front of the L have been a front yard?
It would have been between the principal building and the street.
I understand, but it wouldn't have been the front yard?
Uh, in the GRB, no, your front yard would have been five feet off the property line. So, say if the house was three, and this was off the back corner, so you had maybe 17 feet here, and I'm probably not doing math right, but you had enough space to put a couple of parking spaces or one parking space, it would be between the principal building. If this was a detached garage, it would be in front of an accessory building.
I'm just, I think, Rick, you have the consensus. I just wanted that distinction clear. The front yard, yes, I mean, maybe no. Sorry.
I was with you until that very moment, right there, when you went yes, no.
So front yards, so should we, do we, does that mean we want to...
Eliminate outside the historic district?
We definitely want to do that, I think.
And I think principal building and street distinction, only commercial.
Only commercial, okay, got it. So this is... Only commercial or only, because are we gonna talk about apartments as well?
Trouble is in the, some parts of the older part of the city, they are even more restricted, but in general, your garden apartments, they're all developed, so they're taken care of. But perhaps you could just say all non-residential, non-residential buildings.
Okay, so, so the first phrase, I should take this back to a, to two items again, so we can treat them differently. So the required off-street parking shall not be required in any front yard except for single and two-family dwellings, and required off-street parking spaces shall not be between the principal building and the street for commercial uses. Okay?
So if what you just said, if I just heard you correctly, you could, in fact, park in the front yard for a single family and two-family?
You could also park in the front yard if you built a 20-unit apartment building.
No, you could, between the principal building and the street.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm making that distinction.
Anthony?
Maybe this just says, so we're permitting you to park in the front yard?
If you're a single family. If you're a single family and two.
Okay. Maybe, I mean, that, I don't think that's a good idea.
The other side of the room.
We're on the hallelujah trail again. Let's listen to the opposition.
I just don't think it's a good idea to park cars, like, and, I don't know, I mean, I guess, I can, I can think of a number of places, like in Atlantic Heights, for example, where they've sort of paved the front yard and like parked cars right in front of them, and, I mean, I personally don't, don't think it's, I wouldn't want to see that happening more. But, yeah, I...
That's kind of a unique little neighborhood.
Yeah, and what if you, if you park it on your property, or you park it on the street in front of your property, and there's snow and ice and falling?
I think it's more the better neighborhoods to picture kind of like Maple Haven and Pan Way, I mean, all those driveways are, you're in the front of the house. Atlantic Heights wasn't built for cars, so it's a beast unto itself.
That's a good point.
That's a good point.
A neighborhood would have a hard time being developed that looked like Atlantic Heights today.
You're right about like Maple Haven, a lot of those garages have been converted into principal living space.
Fair enough, good point, all right.
Aesthetically, you're correct. It's not lovely.
No, I understand, it's not.
We have met the enemy, it is us.
Okay, flipping over to page 142 if we could. We have two additions here, that were both suggested last time. Just a reminder, on page 141 is a table that talks about the dimensions, numbers and dimensions, the dimensions of parking spaces. We also have numbers, and there was, there's also this requirement, which is in our site review regulations, but we also talked about including it here, to refer to the requirements for parking for the physically disabled, because the parking dimensions that we include on the previous page wouldn't need that. So, so basically, we're saying that regardless of what you see in the table, you also have to include parking spaces that comply with ANSI 117.1. And that's pretty much, it's very close to the same language as in the site review. And then the two paragraphs down, we added a phrase about pervious surfaces. I also, the previous, when we had the previous time, that sentence is not shaded in 91440, those two sentences were one sentence. And I, just to make it clear, I put in examples of such materials include, but are not limited to, between a concrete, asphalt, compacted gravel, and crushed stone, and then added this phrase about pervious surfaces may be used provided that they meet the above objectives and provide equivalent protection of surface and groundwater resources. And, and in the site review regulations, we encourage the use of pervious surfaces as long as they don't, as long as...
They work.
As long as an impervious surface wouldn't provide better protection.
That's good. Yes, Tony?
And 30, do we want to put, is there another term that we're missing there besides sidewalk, maybe a walkway? I know we talked about the parking lots area.
Yep, yep, good point. I think we called it pedestrian ways, but I'll check.
I assume on that same one that we're going to exempt single-family, so that we don't have to check that out.
Which one is this? Run 30? Oh, yeah.
Otherwise, we're looking at...
There might be some public resistance to that.
Don?
What's, I'm sorry, didn't...
Just private property, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Not an issue, because there's no sign.
We recognize private property rights.
And we have this many times, and speaking of that, on the next page...
There it is.
We have an except for one-family and two-family dwellings, all off-street parking areas shall incorporate the following provisions for pedestrian circulation.
Pedestrian path, that's the term.
Pedestrian path.
Well, I have to ask the question, where in all of this does the parking calculations and the buyout and all that fit in?
Says to be completed, the last, the last, the very last thing in the document.
That's what I was reading when David said something, because I'm thinking, hmm, what is, where is this?
We're still working on it.
Okay.
Still working out the bugs. There's lots of, every time I come up with something, it's something just a little bit.
If you need any examples, I'd be glad to give you a few.
We've got enough examples.
Yeah, they're burned into my memory.
So that's what we have here, and I think we have a little break from zoning for a few weeks.
We do indeed. And in fact, I mean, there's not a lot, you know, other than coming back with a complete draft. The unmet parking need to which Don refers, probably will be a meeting unto itself, a work session unto itself. What else do we have?
Well, there are some, there are some, there are some pieces we haven't talked about yet, that are kind of pieces that are by themselves, that, that, for example, if you want to have a section in the ordinance on cell towers, or a section in the ordinance on wind turbines. So those, those are kinds of things we might be looking at, and we, we have to decide whether we're going to get far enough in this round to have actually text to adopt, or if it would slow down things so much, we just want to leave a placeholder there for the future. So that's the kind of decision.
Yeah, I just.
I would like to, I would like to be able to have a draft, a complete draft ordinance ready for you to look at by, I told somebody about my birthday.
When is that?
We're not telling when.
Day seven.
You have a meeting that night, we could have work session. So, if we did that, so, so if we, if we could do something by then, that would be an ideal thing, because I think we could, we would like to be able to have another round with some of the people, like the Historic District Commission, the Constellation Commission, to look at their sections, then give you a complete, a complete ordinance to look at, and then start doing a process of public meetings and reviews. That would be, that would be ideal if we could do that.
Just, just to keep us on track too, we have received over the years a lot of requests, and probably at some point, those should be gone through.
Yes, and that's another thing, I mean, I've been, I've been looking at map changes. I referred to the fact of pulling back the, the Central Business District on Islington Street up to Tanner or something like that. And we've, we've talked, we've redrawn the map around Osprey Landing to tighten that up. We'll be looking at the Lafayette Road Gateway District, which we need, probably need to come back to you with another round for. So there will be a number of map, map changes in the Historic District, the Historic District Commission has been looking at some map changes.
We've also got some requests for particular uses to be included, which just means sort of asking the board, do you want to do it or not?
Yeah.
Alright, ML?
Just, where's the rail, you know, they're talking about a possible rail line, and I just want to make sure that we're, when we're drawing stuff, if, if that's, I don't know.
That would be connected to Borthwick Forest, right?
They're talking the Rockingham branch.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, in terms of bringing up, sort of newer issues like wind turbines, the thing that occurred to me just at the very end of looking at the off-street parking was electric vehicles. You know, they're due to come online within the next few years in some form, whether it's even wireless power somehow is the latest. So, you know, I have no idea what that would, right.
You know, the other thing with all this, it really is a work in progress.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, right.
Diminishing marginal returns.
Right, especially these things that are.
Because the other thing that's not happening is, since the zoning ordinance needs to be adopted in parallel with the site review regs, we really need to get these things online sooner rather than later. So at some point, we have to say, we've really enjoyed a meeting every Thursday and work sessions, but we're cutting the point in time here and bringing this draft forward, and, you know, for better or for worse, and it's not going to be perfect.
Right, just pull together a list for future.
In a down economy, it's probably a good time to have, have an imperfect zoning ordinance, because we can fix it before the economy bounces back.
We're getting, we're going to see the, the site review again, final version of that.
Well, I think you've seen the final version, but we can, you'll have another chance to look at this, if you think, still think it's the final version. I think we, we, you had kind of said that we like this, yeah.
Right, yeah, we did, we did express consensus satisfaction with that.
But you may, you may feel different.
I think, Don, you even support it.
And a lot of this stuff.
I wouldn't go quite that far, but you're, you're conceptually okay.
So much of this, we could talk about forever and thinking with, we really have to.
That's true.
We're done for now, and then, you know, it will continue to evolve for the rest of our lives. So our next work session is.
I think April 6th.
Twenty-fifth? No, we have that meeting.
Yeah, the 25th, we're at the library.
On April 2nd.
There's a meeting next week, but there's no work session, it's seven o'clock.
And just to be clear, that Islington Street is at the Levinson Room at the library, and it's a joint board meeting of EDC.
HTC.
HTC, Planning Board.
Art speak.
Art speak.
City Council.
City Council, so five boards.
I will not be there, unfortunately.
April 2nd, work session on Borthwick Village, which is a Thursday. The Islington Street meeting is a Wednesday. If you come on Thursday, you'll be a day late. And there's no mini-work session before our regular meeting next week, it's seven o'clock start.
Great.
And the custodian of the board's schedule is now with Rick.
Wow. Pretty powerful.
Pretty, pretty important, I've got a lot of responsibility.
Oh, don't let it go to your head, though.
He indicated it was up to him if he wanted to delete the previous, previous meetings that we've held.
Wow. Okay, any other thoughts, questions?
No, thank you.
That's it?
Thank you, I mean, really, thank you, this is.
This is why he gets the big bucks.
Well, I'll tell you, it's, it's a big feat, it's huge.
I like to get up and show movies.
Well, I, I will say.
Yeah, you do have a lot of good images.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Anthony can't leave, the rest of you.
No, but he's, we're turning.
Thank you, Anthony. I'm trying to cut off two weeks. Yeah, trying to be formal.
Have we moved to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
Okay, good for you, we are adjourned.